So, good morning, everybody. At eight thirty, Monday, February twenty-eighth, we'll call our open meeting to order. Hope everybody had a great weekend. We're gonna start it new in council business. We have one on the agenda here, two-one, Councilor Malkinson. Good morning, Councilor.
Good morning. I just wanted to, I'm sure you guys might have read the report that I had on here. It was just about the proposed calendars of the school districts considering adopting right now. They're looking for feedback right now. I just wanted to speak a little bit to the purpose of the report, and that was, you know, just to inform you about the proposed changes, you know? They'd have a bit of a, a bit of an effect on the city's operations, you know? We clean the pool in September when the kids go back to school typically, and some of our, some of our oper, not operations, but some of our Parks and Rec programs are oriented around the school schedule, so I think it would affect the city in a little bit of a way, and for that reason, that's why I wanted to inform the other councillors about it. And I wanted to say as well that it's not my intention to provide the school district with direction or anything, you know? They were elected to make decisions on their own behalf.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's, that's the...
That's the gist of it?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, now, thanks for, thanks for bringing it forward. There's no official motion or anything, it's just, just for information for all of council?
That's right, yeah.
Those of us with kids, which is only a few, probably aware of it, but thanks for bringing it forward. It's good for, good feedback, I mean, and I'm glad that you highlighted the fact that it's another level of government, that they're elected to do this, so I'm sure staff will take it under consideration, 'cause as you said, there are, I was thinking about that this morning, too, there are some summer programs, let's say, that Parks and Rec do that might have to be modified if this goes through, but it's just a proposal right now from the school district.
That's right, yeah, they're just looking for feedback.
Jim, do you have any...
Your worship, it's a significant change in a community when the school calendar changes. The traditional school calendar is based on a time when the, many of the school-aged children were required for the harvest, and we're not in that time anymore, so I understand why they're looking at changes, but for instance, if, if a change happens where there are three shorter breaks, and you have a workforce, as we do with considerable amount of seniority and school-aged children, it's gonna be tough to accommodate the holiday requests, because everyone will need holidays at the same two weeks, as opposed to the same eight weeks, which is the situation we have now. So, there'll be a lot of trickle-down effect like that if the school district decides to make those changes.
Okay. I guess that'll be for pretty well any employer, a large employer in the community, so, Councilor Wilber.
I just wanted to clarify, so they're accepting information till March sixth, or input till March sixth?
March sixth, that's right, yep.
Yeah, and you can go online and, I think, vote even, can't you, Councilor?
Um, yeah, they do have an online poll right now. I'm not sure whether they still have it on, but yeah, you certainly can make your concerns or interests known to the school board.
Good, well, thanks for bringing that forward, then. Is there any other council business? Councilor, go ahead.
I wanted to let council know that I'm gonna be attending a meeting of the library board at seven o'clock this evening, and if there's anything you'd like asked or said, then let me know.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Jim?
Your worship, on that topic, as you know, one of your areas of activity this year will be a joint meeting between the school district, or sorry, between the library board and the council to discuss the future of the library, and I wonder if it'd be possible for Councilor Malkinson to start the process of maybe selecting mutually agreeable dates?
I believe we already, we have our first one already set for them for next Friday, I believe, so...
All right.
Is it this Friday?
This Friday.
Twenty-fourth.
Yes. That's good, so maybe you can just remind them this, tonight, or they can remind you.
Of the meeting on Friday?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks again. Seeing nothing else, we'll move on to minutes, then, so we have three-one are the minutes of regular meeting from February sixth for adoption. Councilor McFadden, Councilor Malkinson, all those in favor, opposed, it's carried. Any business arising for anyone? Yeah, it looks like you have something, Councilor Malkinson?
I was, I was just curious, this might not be the right time to bring it up, but going through the minutes about the resolution with the Mile Zero Park at the last meeting, I was a little bit curious. In the resolution, it said that our staff plan to meet with the Historical Society and Parks Society.
Yes.
I was wondering if that was mentioning anything specific there? Are we getting them all together as a group to discuss the future of the Mile Zero Park? I don't know.
Whether it be a group or individual, Jim, I know the direction from council was that we wouldn't do anything until we met with everybody.
Right, and I think there will probably, if this plays out in the way that, you know, previous projects have played out, there'll probably be both generalized meetings with everybody and then individual meetings with particular groups.
Okay. And to your question, Councilor, that's a perfect time to bring it up, good. So, seeing nothing else, then, we will go to correspondence. Correspondence, first one is five-one, which is a letter from Lakeview Learning Center, which is a request for community partners.
For information?
Councilor McFadden, information, thank you. Councilor Kenny, seconding. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. Five-two, under correspondence, is a letter from the 2012 MVPA Alaska Highway Convoy, and this is for the official launch ceremony that will be happening here later on this summer. The dates aren't on the, it's in August, though. I believe what they're asking for is permission to use NAR Park, I'm assuming they'll probably want to close it off, probably for that night, they're gonna do some celebration, bit of a launch, when you look at fifty, sixty vehicles, they'll probably need a good portion of the parking lot, so that's why, in a situation like this, they're coming forward for specific ask from us to use it, so, Councilor Kenny?
I'd like to move that we try to accommodate them, have, I think that it would be a great thing to have them gathering in the NAR Park, so...
Yeah, it's definitely the place to start for it.
Yeah, yeah, so I move that we allow that, and whatever arrangements have to be made with RCMP, I believe, is with the RCMP, though, that has nothing to do with the city.
Well, well, first of all, I guess, seconded by Councilor McFadden.
Sorry.
Okay? No, that's, no, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure before I started speaking, you know, there'll probably be some issues with some city staff, I'm thinking, Jim, possibly barricading off the parking lot, and then working with the staff at NAR Park, tourism...
I would expect here, worship, but not very much, and the purpose of having the RCMP involved in leading the convoy is that then you don't have to worry about blocking off all the roadways, so it's designed to be, you know, a minimal staff expense.
Perfect. And I think it's a great opportunity to showcase as well, that's the most important thing, so... And as you see on there, once they have everything finalized, they've invited all of us to wave goodbye to them as they trek up the highway. Any other comments, then? Okay, so all those in favor, opposed, it's carried. Not quite nine o'clock, so we'll skip over all our delegations, we have quite a few proclamations coming forward today. So, we'll move into reports, so the first report is seven-one, which is twelve zero two seven, which is from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding a bulk water fill station and a truck wash request. Councilor Kenny?
I'll move the recommendation that the report number ADM-12027, from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, regarding the bulk water fill station request be received, and further that council deny this request and direct the applicant, complete the required engineering work at the proponent's expense.
Okay, seconded by Councilor Wilber. And any questions? Councilor Malkinson?
Worship, I had a question, should've waited for you to call on me.
That's fine.
I did have a bit of a question about the recommendation, it says, "Complete the required engineering work at the proponent's expense," I was wondering if they were referring to the low-pressure vulnerability in town, they're asking the proponents to pay for that work?
Yes, because in that area, right now, the amount of water they're asking for, I'm assuming from a staff level, we cannot guarantee that they can get that amount of water without jeopardizing the system.
Mm-hmm.
So, instead of the taxpayers paying for a engineering study to benefit them, we're saying, if you want to go forward with this, then we suggest that you do the engineering study. If the study comes back and says that there won't be any, any jeopardy to our water system, then we can make a different decision, I guess. Jim, is there probably more information on that?
Yes, your worship, previous requests, we've been able to run through our own water modeling program with our SCADA system and say, either yes, this can be accommodated, or no, it can't. When we run this one through the model, it says, you need to do more in-depth engineering, it may be possible with some revisions to the system, so the recommendation here is that the proponent ought to pay for that investigation, and if the investigation says it's feasible with certain upgrades, then the proponent should pay for the upgrades as well.
Okay. Does that answer your question for now, Councilor?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Any other questions, then?
Well, I guess they also need to know that there's still no guarantee that they're gonna give a permit if the engineering study says it is feasible, there's still no guarantee. It's potable water they're asking for.
They're asking for potable water?
That's what gets me, it's, we're trying to go the other way, you know, get off potable water.
And as noted in the report, I believe, it also, we have turned down other requests in the past.
Exactly, yeah.
For this, mostly to do, I should quantify that mostly to do with the fact that with the study showing that there wasn't enough water, which is, but exactly to your point, is we're doing a water reclamation project about a quarter of a mile away from here to, and a fill station that we're paying for to try to avoid things like this.
What about the truck wash, is that all part and parcel of the same?
Yeah, the truck, I think, and Jim will correct me if I'm wrong, it's, we're kind of talking two different businesses in one building, where they're gonna do a truck wash, and under that, they'll do a full recycling, it looks like, they're talking about rainwater catchment.
Yes, okay.
So, that's kind of a separate issue, and that's kind of a requirement that a lot of these car washes go through.
So, they will come back with a proposal, perhaps, for just a truck wash, I think it is.
I believe you'll even see it later.
Good.
Any other questions, then? Okay, so all those in favor, opposed, it's carried. Next is seven-two, which is twelve zero two-eight, report from the Chief Financial Officer, and this is just our receivable report that we get. This is for year end. Councilor Kenny?
I'll move the recommendation that the report number ADM-12028, from the Chief Financial Officer, regarding the receivables report, December thirty-first, 2011, be received for information.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Malkinson. And were there any questions for Shelley? Because I won't answer them. Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, it's carried. Seven-three is report twelve zero two-six, from the Fire Chief, and this is regarding a policy change for our management staff at the fire. Councilor Malkinson?
Your worship, I move that this report be received, and that following changes be made to the administration personnel, or personnel exempt and management overtime policy, and in the addition of the following preamble, exempted management staff of the City of Dawson Creek to paid on a salary basis, which includes the, an expectation that the hours of work are those hours required to fulfill the duties of the position, typically management staff is available during regular office hours and via alternate means outside of business hours, and the addition of item six B regarding the management staff as follows. B for management staff, overtime will only be paid to management employees under the authorization of a provincial emergency program, task number, and shall be signed off by the chief administrative officer or his designate. All time worked while acting on an emergency event shall be recorded.
Perfect, seconded by Councilor Kenny. Any questions or discussion? Councilor McFadden?
In the summary report, they make reference to the provincial emergency program, and that brings to mind the fact that at one point in time, we had a pretty much complete mobile hospital in the basement of the old post office, that I understand has been moved to across the river. I don't know if staff has any idea what happened to it, or is it gonna come back? Does anybody know anything about that?
Blank looks, I mean, I've been...
Your worship, it was moved and preserved, I assume it's still available for use in the area.
Thank you.
Okay, to the best of our knowledge. Good question. Any other discussion, then? All those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. Eight-one is latecomer charge interest rate establishment bylaw, 2012, for consideration for adoption. Councilor Kenny, seconded by Councilor McFadden. Any other comments? I guess none, all those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. And I have nothing officially here to bring up on mayor's business, other than it's been an exciting couple of weeks, I think I've been home for three days, so thanks to council who have been filling in and helping out with some of the other engagements here locally while I've been out spending time in Ottawa and Calgary and Cornell, and I leave first thing tomorrow morning for Vancouver, so it's a, it's a busy couple of weeks here. So, on that, I'll turn things over to the diary, Jim.
I'll just kick that over to Greg, your worship.
Well, thank you, worship. On the Calvin Cook Center, I hope people have been driving by and seeing all the activity there, we have a number of crews working, we've completed all the underground piping, so this week we'll be pouring the concrete floor in the basement, and we'll do, be doing the level topping next week. We've got HVAC, mechanical, electrical crews all on site, we've got interior partitions being done on the top floor, and when they're done, they'll be moving down to the main floor, and if you drove by last week, you would've seen that the Glaziers are busy working, replacing all the windows. We actually have two crews, one has to remove the putty because it's got asbestos in it, and then the other crew comes behind and puts in windows, so, but things are moving along at a great rate, so I'm very happy with that. I wish I could say the same about the reclaimed water plant, we ran into a couple of big issues in the, in the last couple of weeks. Roof is behind schedule, because when the trusses arrived, they were too short, or actually, they were too long, and they had to be repaired on-site, cut back, re-engineered, and then finally put on. Roof is now on, however. Inside, it's full of mechanical equipment, it's all being assembled right now. Electrical fell behind as well, because BC Hydro requested some last-minute changes, we had to order some parts, and some of the crucial components that we had ordered months ago still hadn't arrived, but they did arrive last week, thank God, and so they're being worked on. We're still waiting on our Department of Fisheries and Oceans permit, but we are assured by them that it will be ready for us in March, so, once we get over those, these last few hiccups, we'll just keep right on steaming.
And not that I want to encourage a lot of people to drive down there, because it is a busy worksite, but if you happen to be in the area, you'll notice there's quite a bit going on, I was down there with Bert on Wednesday or Thursday, and it's nice seeing all the buildings and the activity going on there, it's, with that, for those that haven't heard, obviously, for Shell, who signed a, quite a substantial deal with, was it Mitsubishi, in the area, two-point-nine billion dollar partnership, and, or was that with Incana, my apologies?
With Incana.
My apologies, so that's, that's all gonna help the area out, but it highlights the importance of the water reclamation project, so... So, on that, let's move to the consent calendar, eleven-one. Someone to move? Councilor Kenny, seconded by Councilor Wilber. All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. Strategic priorities chart, Jim?
Nothing new on the chart, your worship?
Gets a bit more exciting later on in the year when we get to start crossing things off, and I'm assuming nobody signed up for question period, Brenda?
No, there is not.
But I ask, I have a question of you, then, on procedural bylaw, are you allowed to vary the agenda for delegations? I can't remember on, I thought for delegations we couldn't.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't see a problem with that.
Okay. I just see we have quite a few here, so...
Which is, we've usually had enough business that it's...
I know. So, on that, then, with council's indulgence, let's move to vary the agenda, it's not quite nine o'clock, but we'll vary the agenda to go into delegation, since I see some of our delegations are present, instead of making them wait, so we'll start with the first delegation, we have Ms. Kathleen Connolly and Ms. Camille Shearing-Cook, President from the Chamber of Commerce in attendance, and we have just a nice quick proclamation here that I'll read out and invite you to come forward. So, whereas the Dawson Creek Chamber of Commerce is a volunteer business organization working together to achieve a better quality of life, support business, and support the local economy, and to build a strong community, I therefore do hereby proclaim February twentieth to twenty-fourth as Chamber of Commerce Week in Dawson Creek, and thank you very much for coming in, and that, I like these nice, to the point, yes, I was ready to come to the front here, and I'm sure you have a couple of things you want to tell us, we'd love to hear how things are going in the chamber, and probably welcome...
Yes, we'd like to welcome Kathleen Connolly to the position of Executive Director at the Chamber, I think she's a little go-getter, so, and we appreciate us being so much more involved as the board, of course, I'll be there, but, but welcome, Kelly.
Thank you.
Nice volunteer position as President, so, thanks for everything you do, because I know we've always talked about the importance of having a vibrant, active Chamber of Commerce for our community, and when you look at, especially in a booming time like this, you want to encourage as many of the new businesses coming to town to make sure that they sign up and become Chamber members, become actively involved, I know we're always trying to encourage that, as I'm sure you are as well, and...
And we have an open house on Thursdays, please welcome to staff, I have the Director and myself there, and we have our staff throughout the day until two o'clock, so...
Would you like to maybe use this time to remind people about the Civic Awards as well, I think they're coming up next month?
Sure, so, we will be having the Civic Awards at the Best Western on March twenty-third, we'll be doing a media campaign this week, starting to encourage people to put in their nomination forms, nomination forms can be received at our office, give me a call, I can email or fax, so, yeah, if anybody knows of anybody, please get them to get in touch with me, so, March twenty-third, sixteen.
There's about five or six different categories, so, definitely, there's lots of opportunity for people in the community to nominate people.
Indeed. It would be nice to see a lot more nominations, we had one last year, but new businesses and people that are excited about being in business, there's a lot of us who are so excited for, but, anything, you know, those nominations would be great, I know it's hard to participate, but, yeah.
Well, we appreciate, I mean, it's a great opportunity to get out, and we showcase our business to help showcase other businesses to promote the communities, that's what it's all about, so...
So, when is the deadline for nominations? March fourteenth. Thank you.
And that's on the Chamber of Commerce website, too, all that information, and I love the website, by the way, I have a lot of occasions, emails, and, I know Matthew wants to get you here, so, I'll go onto this.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the new job.
Thank you.
Worship, congratulations.
I don't see, six-two's not here yet. How about we recess for five minutes, I've noticed that a couple of other delegations are not quite in the room yet, and before we move into, Mr. Jenkins on with the oil and gas, we want to make sure that we get through the other proclamations, so, just recess, grab a coffee for a few minutes. So, thanks, everyone, good morning, again, we're going to call the meeting back to order, we were continuing on with delegations, we're gonna move over six-two, which has been rescheduled, and we are at six-three, so we have Marge Monlezen and Marquise Leppke in attendance, and this is for the Heritage Week proclamation, which I'll read out and then invite you to come forward. So, whereas Heritage Week is celebrated in communities throughout BC every year, commencing on National Heritage Day, the third Monday in February, and whereas in recognition of energy in British Columbia, the theme for this year's Heritage Week celebration is energy in British Columbia, a powerful past, a sustainable future, and whereas every community has its own energy and power story, the arrival of the first electric lights, the emergence of petroleum-fueled transportation systems, and the preoccupation today with conservation, and whereas communities throughout BC mark Heritage Week to celebrate their unique history and heritage, I therefore hereby proclaim the week of February twentieth to twenty-sixth, 2012, to be Heritage Week in Dawson Creek. So, thanks again, good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for bringing the picture come for you, I know Matthew loves to take about four or five pictures.
That's how it works, Matthew.
Quick, please.
I'll tell you, get to the press first.
Jill already has it on Twitter now, too. So, thanks for coming in, and...
I just wanted to mention, we have a display in the window, and, um, Alaska Highway House, both windows, and we are, and we have, we will be in the Coop Mall on Saturday from ten to oh-three, and we have the display, well, because this is the vice and pen pal of the War of eighteen-twelve, and also Black History Month, and we have the display of both of those.
Oh, nice. Do you remember the War of eighteen-twelve?
Absolutely.
You know, it's one of the good old days.
And I'd just like to add...
Strike that, Bert.
The Historical Society will be celebrating sixty years in Dawson Creek, and this year we'll be celebrating it, and we'd like to invite you all, and we'd also like to invite you to our regular meeting, we have a regular meeting, the third Monday every month, just after our Monday afternoon. I must add, old politicians never die, they just lose their voice, but we would like you to share with us your plans, especially for the village, as they are a major stakeholder there, and we're very interested in what you can do about it.
Oh, definitely, and...
Please.
So, thanks for that invite, and I know there was some miscommunication probably happened there, but, from council perspective, obviously, we passed a motion, especially on the Historical Society and the Mile Zero Park Society, that no, no final decision been made on a lot of the things that have taken place, we wanted to reach out and do a consultation, and that's what we voted on, is that we definitely need to do something down there, as you know, we've done strategic planning there four or five years ago through the studies, and so council has made a motion to move forward in that direction, one of the recommendations, but part of that was definitely the outreach, that we have to all work together, and we hundred percent appreciate all the volunteerism, surveying the hall, park, finer village, wouldn't be there if it wasn't for sixty years of volunteerism, so...
The archives, amazing.
Yeah, and we recognize that's all, all part of it, so, thank you for volunteering and making sure that we're blessed as well, and remind us of the importance of the history of the communities.
Yes.
Good luck.
Okay. So, on that, we're gonna move to six-four, we have Paul Jenkins and Roger St. Jean, sorry, I hope I pronounced that correctly, from the OGC, and this was, council asked them to come forward, some communication with them, just to give us an update, I guess, on activities in the area, we'll just spend a couple of minutes here, we'll just load up the laptop with the PowerPoint, and then get started.
Right.
It's in deep. Always good. Speech.
Centered you out like that, eh?
No, pot's not here.
Duncan, he should've been on.
No, no.
I see, pot's in light, can't see.
Nope.
We might have to turn lights, because a beautiful sunny spring or summer day like this.
Hey, they're very nice, Dan. I'm sure everybody's throwing the people back to it, throwing more than works, I guess, so...
What I'll do is, I'm gonna be at the...
This is the first stuff that we'll follow, we mentioned, they want to...
Thursday.
Saturday.
A big computer, see how things work.
Well, if you're French, you're more...
Typically, it's St. Jean, but, yeah, same thought, I'm French, so, most people never get it, they would say John, and...
You remember when we were outside the doorway?
My dad didn't speak English. Did you remember telling? Oh, yeah. Oh, oh, yeah.
You must have a strange accent.
How's your dad doing?
Our oldest granddaughter, we have customers. We're raising her. We've had her since she was born. But we have fourth one on its way.
There's a big gap in between there, yeah. Lifestyle changes, yeah. My dad, I just don't need it.
Skiing on Saturday, my knees are hurting really bad. It's a whole different thing.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, your arms are sweeping, or brushing, I guess now. There's not so much sweeping, you know, actually brushing.
If not, we got it. Finger pushing technique.
I just looked at her and I think, five kids, and as the rest are kids.
Yeah, I'll talk to the user center.
But it's her choice. So, no, we did, we thought it was right. And then the second one, we just got the interstate involved. Did she tell? Because I said, I'm not going to be, I've raised five.
Not yet, but we're working on it.
So, it's hard.
Jackie told us that the primary city of Tsavo, about dinosaurs. Yep, at the, at the AR station. And at the Co-op Saturday. Excuse me, Jerry. I have to work with the Historical Society to get some of this part.
It needs to be updated.
We have my key.
Have you just, have you just sit back? Someone else. Everything's okay.
Thanks again. We look like we're loaded enough and ready to go, so. Thanks, Paul.
Well, thank you very much for, Mayor and Council, for having us over here. My name is Paul Jenkins, and I'm the Oil and Gas Commission Commissioner. And this is...
I'm Roger St. Jean. I'm the acting deputy commissioner for the permitting and authorizations department of the commission.
So, I'm based out of Victoria, although I do not spend a whole lot of time there. And Roger's based out of Fort St. John office. And I'll be doing a bit of a promotion for our local office here. It's over on Hundred Second Avenue at fourteen forty-five. So, got a resource center there that if you haven't had the time to go through it yet, it's, it's an actual, an interesting progression of how oil and gas has started in the province and worked its way through to present times. And that's what we're going to discuss today, is present times. I don't know if you can figure out the button. Let's try that. Oh, look at that. So, what I was hoping to do is just give you a bit of perspective on what we do and how we do it, and then take any questions you might have about oil and gas going on in the province. I know it's a, a big topic throughout the province. I was in Castlegar and Nelson for the weekend, and everyone there was asking me about all the pipelines going on in B.C. So, it's, it's a hot topic throughout the province now, which is good, because I know it's been a hot topic up here for a number of years. So, the Oil and Gas Commission, we are, we have a regulated mandate through the Oil and Gas Activities Act that describes under section four, all the things we do. What we did last year is we updated our mission, vision, and values to make it a little softer from the, the legal language that's in the act itself. And we, we've, staff are taking this very seriously, as they should. A lot of what we're doing there, again, is protecting public safety, respecting those affected by oil and gas activities, conserving the environment, and supporting resource development. So, it's a, it's a multifaceted mission that we have, and we have systems and people set up for each of those things within the commission. And if any of you had the opportunity to, to deal with our staff, hopefully you see that they're very professional and good at what they do. Just in terms of, of oil and gas in the province, we're mostly a natural gas province. If you go to Alberta, Alberta's, I think, two-thirds natural gas, one-third oil. We don't have anywhere near the amount of oil that Alberta has, certainly. So, we're mostly a, a natural gas province. And we have shifted recently, over the last, I'd say, five, six years, from a conventional province where it was one well on one well pad, hunting more for, for the gas, to more of a, a farming. I guess that's the analogy that the sector is using now. And into specific basins, so you've heard about shale gas. In B.C., we've got four major basins that we deal with. The biggest that I think everyone heard about was the Horn River. There was lots of excitement a number of years ago with that. To the west of that is the Liard Basin, also lots of gas in there with shale. And to the east is the Cordova Embayment, and there's been some activity in there. Not as much as going on on the Horn. And then down in this area, the big one is the Montney Basin. And that one's certainly been growing in importance the last couple of years. So, with the price of gas now, and when the Horn River Basin was, there was all the excitement going on the Horn River, I guess about two thousand six, two thousand seven, pricing gas was about thirteen dollars, and I think today it was somewhere in the two dollars and sixty cent range. And, you know, just perspective again, and this is just from a regulator's perspective, but the, the break even for companies in the northern portion, so north of Fort Nelson, would be closer to six dollars. I'm sure they'd like it to be eight dollars. But in the Montney, they can, they can probably operate around the four, four or five dollar range. So, they're still pushing it at the... Don't want to do anything here? Probably not.
I think that says Java break.
So, what's going to happen in the province, and what we're seeing certainly is a shift from any of the activities up in the, in the northern basins down to the Montney. When we've met with oil and gas companies in Calgary and when they come out here, they certainly say that there's still a lot of interest in B.C., and a lot of it is centered around the Montney Basin. So, we'll still see a lot of activity down here. And part of that is because we have the difference between wet and dry gas, where there's liquids associated with, with some of our natural gas. There's a lot more liquids in the Montney Basin. So, companies are still very interested in there, and you've probably seen that in the paper recently, where there's lots of activity going on here. What the commission does is, is, as I said, fairly multifaceted. We are a single-window regulator, which is a, a bit of expertise that some of the other regulators on the, on the planet frankly just don't have. And that was how we were set up initially. So, we do a lot with acts beyond the Oil and Gas Activity Act. We deal with the Water Act, the Forest Act, Heritage Conservation Act. There, there's a number of things we do that other agencies don't do in other jurisdictions. And, and what's been happening recently is they've been coming to B.C. and asking how we did it. So, we entertained a delegation from Colombia last week. A week before was, New Zealand was here. Last year, we had Alberta, New Brunswick, Quebec, all in B.C. asking, well, how do you do that? You know, we are a bit of a, a leading light that way. And we've got Algeria coming in the beginning of March. So, and we were in Poland last year at one point, too, as well, and they came here to ask us, how do you do the single-window approach, and how are you doing the, the shale gas development? So, B.C. is, is a bit of a leader in all of that. And, and again, the Oil and Gas Commission has a lot of different things we deal with, from stewardship, environmental values, all the way to public safety, you know, looking at all the well applications, pipeline applications. So, it's, it's a multifaceted agency, and I think that's what makes it so fun to work at. In terms of production, you can see over the years, production has really suddenly climbed there around two thousand, two thousand one, when it just, as you're probably very well aware of what's going on around here, it's gone up quite a bit. Bit in fits and starts recently, as the economy has cooled down a little bit. But we'll certainly still see a lot of activity in the Montney in the next, in the next few years. Just, just so you get a bit of comparison in terms of what B.C. looks like to the rest of jurisdictions that have oil and gas, you know, we're not that big. You know, if you look at the number of, of wells we have, we just have around twenty-two thousand in B.C. That compares to the, close to four hundred thousand in Alberta and in Texas as well. Saskatchewan certainly has been coming on. They've got a lot more oil than we do, so they've been putting in a lot of wells there. So, you know, we, we drilled about six hundred and fifty wells last year, and quite a number of those were in the Montney, and then close to four hundred were in the Montney. Whereas you see Alberta, they've got sixty-eight hundred wells that they'll drill in a year. So, not nearly as big. Certainly, again, though, proactive and, and certainly being leading in terms of how we regulate our sector here, so. The things that we're looking at right now, some of the things we do, we do try to be proactive. We, we do go look at the rest of the world when they come here. We certainly ask them questions as well as to how they're doing it. And looked at when we updated our legislation in twenty-ten, we had the new Oil and Gas Activities Act come in. That was just by coincidence, we were moving to an unconventional development. So, we made sure that we put in legislation, the regulations, the act, that were very consistent with an unconventional development. So, there's a lot of opportunities for both government and industry there to, to do it better, and we certainly took that opportunity on. So, the shift to unconventional resource development is exemplified in our drilling and production regulation. Certainly, there's lots of opportunities to work with our other partner government agencies in terms of water management and all the other surface issues that we deal with. So, that's in the drilling and production reg. We also have an environment reg that we work very closely with Ministry of Environment on and the Ministry of Natural Resource Operations. When we're looking at LNG, as you all know, that's a fairly big thing for B.C. And at, at two forty gas, two sixty gas, that is incredibly important to our economy. That's something that, again, the Oil and Gas Commission has now taken on. We are, Roger was just saying that we've got the first pipe application in that stretches from Summit Lake all the way to Kitimat. That's four hundred and sixty-odd kilometers. That's a big thing for us. It's a, it's a bit of a shift in, in what we do. Most of the pipes that we deal with locally here are, you know, two to twenty kilometers. And, and so that's going to change a little bit of, of where we work and how we work. So, that's a, a big thing for the commission, but we're ready for it. We've set up processes and people to make sure that we're, we're all set for that. So, that's in the door right now. We were also asked to oversee as the regulator, the LNG facility, the first one that's going to be in Kitimat on Heisla, First Nations land. And so, the federal government, the Heisla, asked us to be the regulator as well. So, we've been working with the feds and the Heisla and the rest of the province on, on what that's going to look like. So, we're very intimate with the LNG process and what that's going to be doing for the province. Lots of increasing environmental expectations. Like I said, when I'm in the rest of the province, they're all keen to know what is, what is the impact of the environment, as I'm sure everyone here is. So, proactively, again, we've been working very closely with other agencies and with the industry in terms of what that looks like. And one of the big things for us is transparency. We want to make sure that everyone sees. We don't, we don't do this work just for ourselves. We do it for the province of B.C. And we want to make sure everyone sees what we're doing. So, part of what we'll be doing over the next little while is, is getting a lot more reports out on a regular basis to everyone that wants it. I mean, if you guys want to see what we do on a regular basis, we will make sure we send copies of all our reports on all our inspections, all the activity that's going on in this area. And we can break it down by any activity you want, or an area you want as well. So, if that's something you're interested in, then certainly we will, we will share that with you. And we're going to be doing that with, with the rest of the government agencies. We're going to do that with First Nations and certainly with the industry as well, so they can see where we're going and where we're putting resources. Again, some of the, the concerns and considerations that are certainly coming at us on a regular basis, public safety is, is always first and foremost. A big one that's, as you've probably read, around fracking, and that's certainly through the rest of the province as well, protection of aquifers and surface water. We've been working very closely with the other agencies and with industry on what that's going to look like and what our perspective on that is. We've got, and I'm going to get into a bit of detail on how we're monitoring and managing the water resource, a very important resource. A bit of the, in the media recently, a little while back, was, I guess, earthquakes, seismicity as resulted from fracking. So, we've got a, a study going on with the University of B.C. right now, a three-year study looking at that very thing. And certainly, again, that's something that we want to expand into, is working with credible third-party groups like University of B.C., University of Northern B.C., U-Vic. To have that expertise housed here in British Columbia, and we've had a, a number of meetings with some of those universities to get that going. So, there's, there's a very proactive movement there. We're reporting out on frac fluids right now, and I'll get into that in a second. And then quality of life for everyone up here as well is a, is a big topic, and we want to make sure that, that's something we focus on as well. So, one of the things we did, it came into place January first of this year, was something called Frac Focus. And it's a new website. It's mandatory for companies to disclose what chemicals they're using in the fracking process. So, that's one of the first jurisdictions in, on the planet that, that has this, that we, we took it from the States, but it's voluntary down there. This is mandatory in British Columbia. So, a first step in, in looking at the frac fluids that they're using. So, that's open to the public. They can enter into the site and find out what fluids they're using on what particular well. So, that, that's a pretty big step for us and for industry as well. And that's just the first step. There's a number of things we've got to investigate around fracking to make sure it's safe and not harming the environment. So, very proactive. Industry's responded to it. We certainly are ready for making sure they're doing it right. And we've got our inspection group gearing up now as the reports come in to, to test those reports and make sure that they're, you know, putting in the right information, and that they're, all the companies are putting it in. So, in terms of water, another, again, proactive thing we've done, we, we hired a hydrologist to, from the Ministry of Environment, and he has done just an incredible job. He's, we gave him, you know, pretty clear marching orders to make it better for the province in terms of our water management for the oil and gas sector. And it's got to the point now where the other agencies are looking at some of the things that we're doing and saying, geez, that we could use that in the rest of the province as well. So, very proactive to look at subdividing the, the water basins so that we can start to manage water by basin. And so, if you've got a, an oil and gas activity going on in one of those basins, we can start to model, and that's what we're doing, model how much water is out there, and then say, here's how much is available. And a couple of years ago, right here in, in this area, we, we shut down water use by oil and gas because of the drought that was going on. And again, that was ahead of, of some of the other agencies. And we said, no, we got to, we see this as important, we want to shut it down. So, we're being as proactive as we can in, in the development of our water processes. And it got to the point where, you know, we're, we're starting to look at different rivers, and, and we can model out how much water is available at any given month. And then what we set aside is eighty-five percent of that water is got to be left to the environment. And we'll allow, again, depending on the month, fifteen percent of that to flow. Now, if a flood or a drought situation comes in, then we're going to shut that down. So, we know where there is not enough water, and we know when they can take it. So, it's not just how much, but, you know, when as well. So, the little factoid there at the bottom there, as part of this process, when we start to project out, and we are looking ahead to see how much we think companies are going to need to do hydraulic fracturing in, in B.C., we, we've estimated how much that is. And frankly, you know, one-fifth the available water just from that one river alone would meet all the needs of industry. Now, naturally, they're not going to concentrate in one river basin, but it just shows there's a lot of water in, in Northern B.C., and, and we're managing it as good as we can with the knowledge that we have. The other thing we're doing, and we've started in the Liard Basin, if you remember that map, it was just to the west of the Horn River Basin, is start to look at tactical analysis. So, if, if government sets the strategic analysis for the province and through the land use plans that we have and through the laws that we have, then what the Oil and Gas Commission is doing for the oil and gas sector is starting to do a tactical analysis, so that we're not just looking at individual wells, or we're not just looking at an individual pipeline or a road application. We're starting to look at, at what does the basin need for surface values? So, we're working with the Ministry of Environment and the Ministry of Forest Lands and Natural Resource Operations to come up with, you know, we started with what the valued ecosystem components are. So, this map here is showing red areas are, you can see the, the park around Mack Samish Lake. And if you could really drive in there, you can see that there's red areas around a lot of those river systems. Those are areas where you just can't go. You're not allowed to put a, an activity in there. So, the yellow areas are where you do best practices for caribou or water management, or a host of issues, old growth management areas. And then the green is follow the law. We have a lot of very good laws in place in the province. Green is follow the law. So, there's a lot of oversight at this level. So, we started with Liard. We have now moved it down to the Montney, as we've seen the activity levels move to the Montney. Issues down here certainly are a lot more intense than they are in the Liard for a number of reasons. We've got a lot more private landowners here. We have agricultural land reserved in this area. We have a lot of First Nations up there. There's two or three First Nations that we deal with down here. There's upwards of six. So, a lot more issues that we're dealing with when we went on. to throw those resources down to the Montney, you know. So, we'll be coming up with a similar map and a similar document that says, when you're managing for oil and gas in this area, these are the things you've got to look at ahead of time. So, again, taking it away from us responding to just an individual application one at a time and then trying to find out what's going on, this will be made available, again, to the oil and gas companies, First Nations, anyone that wants to have a look at it. It'll be up on our website. And this will be used by our staff to start to look, again, a little bit more broader at some of the issues that are out there. So, if there are issues that need to be into our tactical analysis, then we are absolutely willing to take all that information in and do the analysis and then provide it to our statutory decision-makers, so they can make a decision more informed than we've had in the past. And we've got a lot of information now, and I think the data management systems have allowed us to get to this point now. So, it's pretty exciting for a lot of the staff to be working on this. As I said, we're moving into the Montney. Just on agriculture, I thought I'd touch bases on that a little bit in terms of what we're doing there. We've got two staff dedicated to agriculture issues right now. We've got an agrologist and a landowner liaison inspector that works with landowners directly. We've got 31% of the provincial A.L.R. up here, as you're probably well aware. We do a lot of work with the Agricultural Land Commission on that now. We looked at lower risks for exempting from Agricultural Land Commission applications. So, we have a delegation authority that we work with the A.L.C. on right now. We're updating that right now. So, again, if you've got any interest in hearing what we're doing on that or any topics you'd like us to make sure we touch bases with, now would be the time to get it in there, as we're starting to modernize our A.L.C. approach with the Agricultural Land Commission. We did an audit. We thought, you know, we wanted to make sure that we're doing it properly. So, we asked the Forest Practices Board, who's a darn-good auditor for the province, to come in and audit us with how we're doing on the delegation memo that we have with the Agricultural Land Commission. There were a number of recommendations within that report that they'd put out, and we're going after those right now. So, the three that got there, we need to, you know, track the timing of pipeline reclamation and the 24-month requirements. We're tightening that up. We've got to develop with the A.L.C. Soil Handling Guidelines, and certainly we're starting that process with the A.L.C. And then, again, we've got to rationalize, and that's why we're doing this tactical approach, the total building footprint to indicate the risk of any of the facilities on agriculture or farming itself. So, just in terms of numbers, we had about close to 600 applications in 2010 that we got our summary for the last, that was last year we had summary on. And then what we call 89 section, our Schedule B reports, and that's just sites that were reclaimed to the A.L.C. standards. And we have a lot of processes and guidelines for that as well. And then recently, we've got, oh, we do have 2010, 11, around 600 and 650. So, it's increasing again as we move into the, in the Montney, and we're going to see more of that. So, certainly, we've got to get, working with the A.L.C. in terms of updating that delegation agreement. We've got staff dedicated to that right now. And so, we're just taking a bit of a leadership role there with the A.L.C. and making sure that's happening on a, in a timely basis. So, we got it in place for seven years. We've updated it a little bit over the years, but now we're going to update it as we move into the Montney. So, we're looking beyond that. We've had some requests from the regional district to look at the low-impact pipelining practices. And so, we've been working with companies and with Alberta on what they do there. And then, again, what are the implications of trying to increase the depth of pipelines as a safety measure? Again, some people have asked us to increase depth, but as we increase the depth, you know, bury a pipeline deeper, usually that means a bigger footprint on the surface. So, we're trying to do that analysis to see what the sweet spot is between those two things. And we've been working with Canada standards as well, because they've set the standard for the national standard. So, just to get into the Montney, again, that's generally where it is. Takes up a lot of this part of the province. We had 383 wells, so close to 400 wells out of the 600-odd that we had. That's just going to increase, I think, as the years go by and gas stays at about the level it is. So, right now, that's 57% of all the wells drilled. Again, that'll probably be increasing over the next little while. And we're expecting, again, as people drill, B.C.'s natural gas reserves have increased every year that we put out a report, and we're going to expect, again, that we're going to see another increase in B.C. So, that's pretty important for the province. One of the things we've been doing, again, is a bit of analysis within the Montney on the Agricultural Land Reserve. Certainly, we have all the data. We can gather, and we'll take more if we need to take more. We've got another map here that just shows some of that analysis, probably not that well. But what that's looking at there is how much activity is by quarter section. So, we can actually track this by quarter section, and we can start to see at the tactical level where there's too much activity and where we want to maybe reemphasize reclamation, target that, so that we have a reclamation ongoing, maybe in advance of what's required within the legislation. And we talk to companies about that and the landowners. So, again, just a lot of work that we're doing. Moving forward, we want to make sure that we are building and maintaining relationships. That's, you know, one of the jobs of the Commission is we're working for the people of B.C., and we want to make sure that they understand what we're doing, why we do it, and when we're doing it. We do a regular analysis of our regulations. We just put them in place a year ago, so we're starting that process this year to make sure that what we've got is actually working. A lot more stakeholder engagement. We're being as proactive as we can with landowners and other stakeholders. Certainly, First Nations, we do a lot of work with. Water management, as I said, is a top priority for the province and certainly for us, and protection, and then getting the message out. So, I think that's about it. That's our perspective. So, I don't know if there's any questions or if you have time for questions.
Definitely, yeah. Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Roger. Sir with counsel and sir, Counselor McFadden.
Morning. You mentioned, thank you for coming up this morning first. You mentioned that you will be the regulatory body for the, an L.N.G. plant in Kitimat?
That's right.
Which is yet to be built?
Correct.
Is that in...
So, I mean, there's a lot of work going on right now. The Heisla and the proponents are clearing the land, so they've started that process. But, yeah, there's still the little matter of getting that approved by the banks and by the board of directors. And that decision was actually supposed to be made in February. So, I haven't heard whether it's being pushed out a little bit, but we're talking, the facility is probably $4.5 to $6 billion, depending on how much they can actually get people to work it. And the pipe is probably a little over a billion. So, they're still deciding on that, but there's work going on right now. We've been working with the feds, Heisla, in the creation of a regulation. So...
And in terms of, you mentioned you have the authority, and we've seen it happen, where you shut down industry from drawing water out of, I guess, our watershed. Do you have that same authority for non-industry, like for ranchers, farmers, or private people, just industry?
Just the oil and gas sector.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I know the meeting with some of the major stakeholders for the L.N.G., their plan was to hopefully have a decision on the financial end by the end of February. So, we'll see how that goes. But from your perspective, you know, it's interesting when I was thinking about that, when I was, the, that pipeline, almost 500-kilometer pipeline will be the first major pipeline like that since probably the late '60s that your agency's probably had to deal with.
And it's just one of what we've seen, a number of other companies that are coming in. So, we've seen up to seven proponents for L.N.G. Now, they're not all going to go, but, you know, we're certainly getting ready for more than just the one.
But it must have to, I'm assuming, change somewhat the focus or direction internally with your organization. It's not just the small lines feeding wells. You're talking major production lines now that we haven't seen in 40 years needed in the province.
Yeah. So, we've put in place a major projects coordinator to make sure that she's the focal point for any of the projects coming in, and we can make sure that we're working with the other agencies. The Ministry of Energy has set up an executive director to be in charge of the L.N.G. broadly for government. So, working with the Environmental Assessment Office, Ministry of Environment, and all the other agencies to coordinate that. So, yeah, it is different, but, you know, again, it's just a longer pipeline. Our processes are already in place to deal with that.
Yeah. Good. And I know from a local perspective, obviously, looking at the role of the O.G.C., must be a little bit more active, I'm thinking, down in our area. A lot of private land. When you look at the Liard and the Horn, it's all, for the most part, crowned, from what I understand.
Absolutely, yeah.
There's not as many issues. So, I mean, I really appreciate the fact that the agency has an office here in Dawson Creek, works well, from what I understand, with the Farmers' Advocacy Office, too. They kind of complement each other possibly to make sure that we're at least getting the local voices heard and at the table. So, thanks for that.
Yep, absolutely. It's very important, and it is a shift in emphasis for us. And but again, we have the processes set up. So, it's just, we're moving down all our resources from the north. Well, not all of them, but, you know, more emphasis down here.
Exactly. Any other thing else from counsel?
I just have a question there. Yeah. When you're talking about the obligations for the, going on to agricultural land, and you talked about the three levels, I believe there was three levels. What's the lower, where they don't have to apply a lower risk on land issues? Like, what's considered lower risk?
In terms of delegation?
Well, typically, for the lower risk, you'd be looking at, you know, some of these shorter pipelines, where they have to build them to a certain standard, and they have to be able to be farmed within a couple of, like I said, I think there's the 24 months I was mentioning there. They have to reclaim those sites back within 24 months. So, we get the Schedule A, which is what the land looked like prior to, and the intent is they do a Schedule B, and the intent of the Schedule B is that it should look like the Schedule A initially, you know, what was there the first time. So, there's always that baseline. And the intent of those is that they're supposed to be doing that within a 24-month period. So, that'd be an example of where they're exempt from applying to the Agricultural Land Commission, but we get the information that way. So, it doesn't have to go to the A.L.C. whatsoever for that. We review that on their behalf. And like I said, we're looking at that as slower, a bit of a lesser risk, and that portion doesn't have to go through their entire bureaucracy for those. And we have all those standards in place for that. So, that'd be an example of one of those.
And then we report to them, so that they get a chance to look at what we've done. And we audit that every year or two.
Yeah.
I'm glad you clarified that, because I was thinking, so they can just go in if it's lower risk?
No, no. There's still standards in place.
Yeah, no, they still have to go through us.
It still goes to the oil and gas, but prior to that, it goes through the...
Yeah, there's certain things will go to the Agricultural Land Commission that we have no jurisdiction for. And again, well, that's like I said, we're relooking at that delegation agreement, because a lot of that was based on conventional oil and gas. Like I think Paul indicated, it was one well, one pad. Well, now, we've got unconventional gas, where they're putting, you know, 24 to 30 wells on a pad. So, the footprint's a little bit bigger in that one area, but there's less roads to build, there's less pipelines to connect, and there's a lot less of these smaller pipelines or, you know, well sites everywhere. But that wasn't ever designed in the old agreement in terms of that. So, that's why some of that has to be revisited, because of, well, the technology has changed, although a certain, a different type of extraction totally, and how we did it seven years ago doesn't fit today's world anymore. So...
And the way they do it three years from now won't be the same as they do it today.
Again, and we do need to be somewhat adaptive to some of those things.
Good. Well, I really appreciate it. Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Roger, for coming in. And again, just for everybody else who want to highlight the fact that we do have the office here in Dawson Creek. It's open to the public.
With our Resource Center, and I encourage everyone to go through.
And it's been open now probably six months, I think, right?
Yep.
So, and I was fortunate enough to go in there a few times, and it's, there's a lot of information there. And it's, we encourage people to go in and ask the questions, because sometimes it's not as easy as just watching a movie on TV, thinking you know everything now. There's a lot more to this.
Yeah.
And our website has got a fair bit of information on it, as well, as Paul indicated for transparency. We have a lot of reports there in terms of what's going on on a regular basis. There's annual reports on essentially just about every activity we do. So, like I said, that's being the transparent regulator as best as we can. Here's everything that we have, and the Resource Center has additional information as well there. So...
And if you want to see more, just ask. And we're going to get a terminal set up there, so landowners can come in and enter information and see what's going on in their area as well.
Excellent. And if I don't see you beforehand, I assume and hope to see you, gentlemen, at our energy conference here this September.
Right.
We're hosting here in Dawson Creek.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. We will just recess for a few minutes. We're going to move into Committee of the Hole in a second, and let's make sure everybody's ready. So, welcome back, everybody. We're going to call the meeting back to order, and we're going to move into Committee of the Hole before I move into the media question period, because there might be a few from this. First, we have Sergeant West, 151. So, good morning, sir. Thanks for coming in. I know how busy everybody is.
Yeah, we've been pretty busy over in our house. Sergeant West with Dawson Creek, our C.M.P. detachment, as you guys well know. Staff Sergeant McDonald had advised me on Friday that my attendance here probably wouldn't be necessary, but I received a call this morning and felt incumbent upon me to appear and give you guys at least a partial update, albeit I can't be very detailed on the latest homicide investigation occurring in Dawson Creek, occurring on February the 14th, 2012. I understand that Staff Sergeant McDonald had given officials in the mayor's office some update last week, but as you can well expect, we had to use the old euphemism, all hands on deck to deal with this particular incident. I can tell counsel that parties have been identified with respect to this particular investigation. Our investigation is continuing. At this point, we're still obtaining statements, preparing documentation, and gathering reports with respect to the investigation. And it's my understanding, as of this morning, that the medical investigation has been completed. Of course, that occurred in Vancouver, but we're awaiting the formal results on paper before actioning that particular portion of the investigation. And that for the community as a whole, the incident doesn't pose a danger to the general public within our community of Dawson Creek or any other community. I think that the public can be assured of that to some degree or another. Over and above that particular incident, hadn't, in talking to the staff this morning, I didn't run a formal report, because I didn't have an opportunity to, but that did not appear that we'd had any overall disturbing crime trends locally that would cause us pause. And as an update on another matter, it appears that the thefts of dogs have abated as suddenly as it had started. We haven't received any other reports that I'm aware of at this juncture with respect to that. And we have no new members into the detachment, albeit we do envision our turnover at some juncture, given our new fiscal year is coming with the R.C.M.P. as of April 1. So, there may be some transfers in and out of the detachment at that time. Other than that, I have no earth-shattering news.
Good. Well, thanks for that. And I was waiting for you to come in, you know, from myself and counsel, obviously, formally wanted to say that, you know, we were obviously saddened by what happened. And our thoughts, prayers go out to the friends and family of the individual who succumbed to his injuries, because that's something, obviously, from a community, from a council city perspective, that's not something that anybody ever expected to see happen. And, you know, we just want to wish everyone well, as best as possible in this hard time. So, turn it over to counsel. Is there any questions of the sergeant? No? And I know, I didn't think there'd be a lot, but I appreciate the fact you're coming in here in the open meeting, just so we could get those comments out there. It's good to hear for the community as well. Everything's following up, and I probably want to thank the community, because I know that, from what I heard over the weekend, there was a lot of people who came forward with information, willing to stand up and speak to the R.C.M.P. with what they witnessed and saw, to ensure that, you know, the proper case is built here for the individuals and...
Yeah, with respect to that, the security staff and the medical staff that were on site at the Canada Event Center provided us, as the R.C.M.P., with as clear a picture as we could possibly hope for, given 3,000 people in a venue, exiting a venue, and milling about in a venue. We've received solid information in that direction from the staff members there. So, that was key in us being able to action this as fast as we could.
Yeah. So, thanks to all that then, too. I appreciate you coming in. Thanks for the update.
Okay, you're welcome.
I know, get back to, probably, hopefully, not a busy week, but...
It's a Monday.
Yeah. Just leave it at that then, right?
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. We'll move on to sortie fire chief. Another gentleman who works hard to keep himself out of work.
Hopefully, everybody enjoyed the weekend. I know I did. Got the report in front of you. There's nothing unusual about it. Motor vehicle accidents still number one culprit, I guess, for our call volume. And that's about it. I got nothing. It's an average month over the last, I guess, if you look at a five-year average, it's an average month for call volume. So...
The roads aren't improving anything?
Yeah, it's, actually, I was wondering the same thing. You know, when you say an average month, and I'm thinking, weather-wise, it hasn't been an average month at all. So...
No, weather... No, weather-wise it hasn't been, but I got no control over that, so.
So the carbon monoxides, I don't see, I only see two on there, which is a good thing. So do we think that maybe our outreach, education, you know, I'm starting to see a lot of things in the media as well about the importance, and I know that your prevention officer was dealing with the media, ensuring people understand the importance around carbon monoxide, you know, there was a, not in Dawson Creek, but in Canada here, there was some fatalities, I think, in central provinces due to carbon monoxide?
One of the, most of the calls we get for carbon monoxiders, it seems to be a big thing now to have home fire alarms, carbon monoxide, burglar alarms, those kind of things, and they're hooked to a central dispatch in Vancouver, Edmonton, Calgary, wherever they are. And so when those alarms ring, we get a call from them. And so most of those are just that, it's, it's usually a faulty one.
Okay.
We haven't had to respond to a, to a situation where we've actually had to drag somebody out of a, out of a building yet. But those are becoming more and more common. We had another one on the weekend, it wasn't a, it wasn't a carbon monoxide, but it was a fire alarm, and it was one of those home security systems. So we're getting more and more and more of those, so you might see those numbers go up, I don't know.
And unfortunately, they're thankfully false alarms, but we still need to respond, right?
Yeah.
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 Any questions then for Shorty? No? Okay, well, thanks for coming in.
Okay.
Director of Corporate Administration. Good morning, Brenda.
Good morning.
Move on to 15-3.
Just a few things to highlight again. The city's currently looking for anyone interested in sitting on the selection committee for the city's recognition awards. Three people chosen to sit on the selection committee will be tasked to review applications for awards such as the placement of a recognition plaque on the wall of recognition at the South Peace Community Multiplex, or naming of a street or facility after a recipient. Applications for this election committee will be received until this Friday, February 24th. Next item, all election candidates are reminded to hand in their campaign financing statements before March 19th. As of today, we have eight out of the 17.
Wow. Can you just maybe quickly remind people, there are, it's actually quite important to have those in because I think there's penalties associated with, such as you can't run in the next election, and I believe it was one of them, right?
Yeah, if they don't hand them in as of March 19th, they have another month to hand them in, but that is with a $500 fee. And then after that time, if you don't hand them in, then you are not able to run in the next, next election.
So just a reminder.
But reminders have been sent out as well.
Okay, perfect.
The city's newsletter will be in the mail this week, including information on the city's strategic priorities and the meeting schedule for the 2012 budget, information from the fire department regarding building permits, and information regarding the city's watershed. And the first public consultation for the budget is March 6th at 7 o'clock at K-PAC. And our staff has been working on planning for our 2012 strategic priorities. The library joint meeting between the library board and city council is scheduled for February 24th at 1 o'clock. The meeting will provide an opportunity for the library board and city council to review future options for the library, which may include some public consultation sessions as well. And the energy conference is being looked after by Myana Consulting, and it's coming along well with the first committee meeting scheduled for February 27th.
Perfect. I should also pass on a thanks to some of your staff there for Brenda and, or sorry, for Cindy and Janet. As you know, with my schedule of late, they've been very busy helping me out, not only with travel, but with some of my presentations and everything, so definitely want to thank them because it's probably a little out of the norm as well, maybe.
Mm-hmm.
But they're so busy working and helping me, so.
Been busier than normal, yeah.
Yes.
I'll pass that along.
Yeah, thanks. Any questions?
Hi, Commissioner. I was just, I'm not sure if I can find it in here now, but last night as I was going through, I heard a mention of an employee family assistance program. I was wondering what that is.
That's one of the benefits that the city provides to the employees, just assistance if any employee needs help socially, mentally.
Oh, okay.
And we just have to tender out for that again.
Wasn't sure what it was, sorry.
No, good. Any, anything else then, questions to highlight? Thanks for putting in the reminder for the energy conference because of, obviously, as we go forward, we're going to be looking for a lot of people to attend and sponsors, et cetera, which, to make it successful, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, thanks very much. We'll move on to Shelley, Chief Financial Officer, 15-4. Good morning.
Good morning, your worship. You've got the report in front of you. Basically, this time of year, it's all about year-end work and budget. And just like to remind everybody, we have our second budget meeting this afternoon at 1 o'clock, and it's open to the public if anybody would like to attend. We give you some cost information on the two big projects, Calvin Creek Arts Center and the water reclamation project. And we filed our carbon tax reporting schedule last week. And the amount that we're getting back from the province is approximately $76,000, and that compares to $63,000 last year. And the increase is due to, we have to do some more analysis, but there's pricing or cost increase as well as volume, so we'll do some more analysis on that. So the accumulated amount that we've received back is $198,508. And not very much work has been done on the strategic plan just because of the time of year, but we did make contact with the City of Medicine Hat, and I'm, just received the information that I'll be going through, and then hopefully in the next little while I can bring the report to council on that, so.
Sure.
Is there any questions?
Well, I was wondering if you could just, quick Kohl's notes version, just to remind some of the new council, maybe, again, it helps at budget time around the, the carbon tax, the purpose of that, I mean, I mean, the background around the Climate Action Charter, but obviously we keep track of what we spend to get it back.
Yeah, sure. So basically, the city council signed the agreement with the province, the Climate Action Charter, and in doing so, the province in return basically committed to reimburse the city for the amount of carbon tax that it paid. The actual reporting period is from June 30th to July, or pardon me, July 1st to June 30th, so there's a tax change each July 1st. But then what we do is we basically keep track of how much carbon tax we pay on things like gasoline, diesel, natural gas, and submit a report at the end of the year, and the province reimburses us.
And that, the acronym that some people will be hearing or referring to is CARIP Funding.
Yes, yeah.
Climate Action Rebate Incentive Program is what it stands for, and that's kind of just brings it all back together. So when we get our CARIP funding back, that's just, just so people are aware of that, so probably good for the public to understand that, too. So thanks, Shelley.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Commissioner Malkinson?
On the long-term financial plan, you said you're, our employee said she was contacting the City of Medicine Hat, they've conducted a long-term financial plan in the past?
Yeah, if you recall, Gordon McIntosh had mentioned that they had done some work because they basically, they run an energy utility that has natural gas and wells and oil and gas wells, and he basically suggested that we contact them because it was a similar, it's not the same situation, but similar, similar things can be applied with our oil and gas even though it's out of, out of our area. So basically, I touched base with the previous CAO there that now runs the energy utility, and he was really, really helpful in sharing the information and basically the work that they had Ernst &amp; Young do some work on that. So I'm just basically making some notes, and, I mean, some of it's confidential, and some of the, I think more of the model can be applied to our situation, and, and hopefully we can use some of that previous work that they did in our situation, so.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thanks again. Any other questions then? Nope, then we'll move on to 15-5, Mr. Henderson, Director of Infrastructure, Sustainable Development.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've brought along John Cullenchuck, who's our new Water Resource Manager. New, I guess, in November. He's been with us for a while, but I thought it'd be important for him to come in and meet everybody, so he's kind of along for the ride this morning, and I'll go through the report, and, and then I'll let John say a few words about himself and...
Sure, thank you.
And how he's enjoying the community, so. Couple of things I'll touch on in the report. You'll see that we've been continuing to collect air samples at our two sites in the community. As you may remember, we, with the Ministry of Environment, in the school district and ourselves, we partnered to install two air sampling pieces of equipment on South Peace School and Frank Ross. So we've been collecting that, and it's my understanding we'll probably likely see some, some results of that, some data in the coming months, and if it's something I can discern, I'll, I'll share with council, so hopefully there's some, something that has some interest for us. The sanitary sewer master plan is moving along. We've been dealing with KWL engineering. We've sent them an incredible amount of information, and they've started their survey. I saw actually the survey crew out on the weekend, collecting some data, so things are moving along on that, so that's, that's good news. Anticipate to see what, what comes out of that. Public Works, it's been kind of an interesting year, as you mentioned earlier, with the weather, so it's, it's actually been a great opportunity for us to get caught up on some of the things we normally don't have a lot of time to maybe put the attention we should to, so we've, we've spent some time out at the water treatment plants and in other facilities on, on making sure everything's painted and cleaned up and maintained, and areas seeing some attention that haven't seen maybe in the last couple of years when we've had that heavy snow, so it's been good. And I don't want to jinx this, but it's, yeah, I can't believe that we've got this far without this much snow, so.
226 hours. Snow plowing time, which is probably a tenth of what it was this time last year.
Yeah, it's, we probably did that in a couple of weeks last year, so, yeah, it's been, it's been quite a change, so. All good, though. All good, I'll take it for now. We'll just hope for some rains in the spring so we have some runoff for our river. Just going to jump over to some of the development services aspects and, and see that we started off with a couple million dollars' worth of building permits already, and, or one and a half million dollars, and, and it's been very busy. I know my phone's been very busy these last few weeks with people looking at land and development opportunities, and it's kind of like spring fever's hit, I guess, maybe because of the sun shining, but we've had lots of interest, so we certainly anticipate another busy year. And I'm just going to jump over to some water stats, and then I'll let John maybe say a few words, but I didn't have it in the report, but I, I got it pulled together, was, is how much water we sold at our water sales in 2011, because that's always a bit of an interesting stat to see with, you know, how busy the oil and gas sector is. 2011, we sold 184 million gallons of water, which constitutes approximately 24% of what we produced, which has been pretty, it's been around that 20, 22, 24% the last few years, so it's, it was a busy year. It hasn't, hasn't slowed down, so just, just an interesting stat to see where we're at, so.
So can I just ask then a question on that? You're taking into consideration businesses in town that have water directly to their businesses, or is this just fill stations?
Yeah, this, no, this stat is our fill stations plus the couple of private businesses that have their, their fill stations within their buildings.
And how do we differentiate, maybe through the cards, when people purchase them? Do we differentiate for residential use for the girls?
That's correct, yeah. We know that if it's a residential or an industrial use.
So this is 24% approximately, which was used for non-potable uses then?
Yes, approximately. Yeah, so significant, significant use.
That's our potable water?
Yes.
That's 24% of our potable water being used for non-potable, yes. And, and just, I mean, that's what's coming through our sales, again, in the area, we know a lot is being used out of whether it's surface sources such as the rivers or storage ponds and others, so.
The ones that we have no control over.
That's right. You know, it's just, so, significant activity.
What was that number, 180?
184 million.
184 million gallons.
At how much a gallon, buck a gallon?
For non-potable use, we charge it at, at, oh, I'm sorry, a gallon, I'd have to change it back. We charge it by the cubic meter, so I'd have to work that back, but...
And there is that tariff that we charge on for non-potable use, which has helped...
It was approximately 700,000 cubic meters, and we charge $4.50 a cubic meter, so.
So.
How much, $4.00?
You're looking...
$4.50 a cubic meter.
So you're looking a couple million dollars.
So, those are roughly the stats.
Interesting.
We did have a question from a counselor a week or so ago about just some of the procedures we do for sampling of water throughout the distribution system, so I've included that in the report, and if you have any questions around that or comments, that's certainly why John is here, because he can answer that better than I can, so. Just goes through a bit about where we sample, what we look for, and what we do if we, we happen to get a, a bad sample, which we haven't in many, many years, so. Point of interest is, in the, in the province, how many boil water advisories there are out there, keeping in mind that in my time, we've never had a boil water, and I don't know if in Jim's time, we've ever had a boil water in Dawson Creek. In the province right now, there's hundreds and hundreds of boil water advisories. So I certainly commend our staff with the job they do and the treatment plant that we have to deal with the source water we have some days, so.
And that is a lot to do with it. We have a different type of closed system compared to some communities.
We have a very high-tech plant, like we'd mentioned before, that deals with the source issues, where other communities may simply have chlorination or simple filtration.
Yeah.
So.
Thus the experts come in to work for us, right?
Yeah, that's right. So maybe I'll just let John introduce himself a little bit and let him, let him tell you where he's from and...
Sure, welcome, John. It seems like you've been here more than a few months from what we've seen you around, so busy working, but welcome.
Yeah, good morning. Again, my name's John Cullenchuck. My wife and I moved up here last November. We moved up from Salmon Arm. I worked for the City of Salmon Arm for about 11 years. Most of the time was in the wastewater treatment facility and the water treatment plant there. So I'd just like to thank the City of Dawson Creek for giving me the opportunity as, as a resource manager here, because I like the direction that the city's headed regarding the, the growth that's here and with the new water reclamation facility. The community itself is positive. I like the city hall atmosphere, like, I like the support that I have, and it's, I think we're all focusing in one direction, and I think it's all achievable.
Good. Well, thanks for that. I mean, I mean, obviously, that's one of the things that we've always touted here and we hear constantly from the staff, is a positive working environment, and, you know, if you can play well together and work well together, it definitely makes for a, a better environment for everybody, so. Just going to open it up to the Florida Council if there's any questions, comments? No? I mean, I just wanted to highlight again that the 24%, which is why this morning, that's really important that we look at all these different models that we have out there when we have to take into consideration further businesses coming to town, because we recognize the fact, especially after when you listen to the OGC presentation this morning, that the water is needed to have a vibrant economy here because of the industry that we have. But then we have to balance that off with still being able to drink water and have the taps, have something come out at our homes, so it's always a delicate balance, one over the other, and so I'm sure glad that, you know, we highlight it all the time, but for that, we're always looking at different opportunities, I guess, to, to reach out to the industry, and, and industry, I should say, is very well aware of this, and they're looking at opportunities to reduce as well, so. Commissioner Kenny?
What's the, the dialogue between LCG and, and the city? Like, do you communicate?
Typically, a lot of that's handled with referral processes, and Reg, our Watershed Stuart communicates quite a bit with, with their staff on that. You know, myself, I haven't had a lot of discussion other than last year when we had the water shortage. Of course, I dealt with it at that point in time, but the referral process is where we have most of that dialogue, is all I guess.
And you're comfortable with, when we were in that drought situation? And you were comfortable with, when we were in that drought situation, how that was all handled?
Yeah, they, they certainly did respond to that, which was, was important by putting on that moratorium, which supported where we were at.
Good. Anything else then, or?
No, just thank you for the report, Kevin, about the water testing.
You bet.
Process, that's really important, and I think that the public would be pleased to know how well we are doing, and, and, because you never see it happening, but it's, the fact that it's ongoing, and no news is good news.
That's right.
A good news story. Matthew?
Well, now he's paid for his donut.
Thank you for that.
Okay, well, thanks a lot, gentlemen.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate the update.
Thanks for having us.
Last but not least, Director of Community Services.
Good morning.
Then we'll open it up to media questions, if there's any from Matthew.
Matthew, I know you have my back. Good morning, Your Worship and my council. Just, within the highlighted area that I wanted to talk a little bit about this morning, will be some of our continued challenges as we go down our, some of our strategic planning with our fees and services charges, and one of those is as we get into shutdown at Memorial and Ken, how will be that continued usage pattern or new group requests as we go through. So, as we get ready for shutdown, some of the things that come into consideration there will be, and we have a request now from the figure skating club, which will bring a report forward.
For the media, that's temporary shutdown, not permanent shutdown?
No, that's our regular shutdown at the end of the season, when we go to dry pad versus ice. Not, not to be confused, I'll leave that. And with that, we, we look very forward to our user group meeting, because there has been a change in policy this year on the ice allocation, and we'll get some feedback from the groups on how we're, we're moving forward for next year. Some of our limitations we would have would be, on extension, would be certainly around, one of our biggest dry pad users is the Quanis Trade Fair, and that's coming up in April, and consideration for council will be is where Easter falls in, because traditionally, at Easter and our, our festive holiday breaks, we don't get a lot of use, so we'll, we'll bring those stats and numbers forward to you as well. Lots of things happening down at the pool, but one of the, the key things that, that's always critical for us is training, and a lot of that is around the recruitment of you and, and young staff, and ensuring our standards and, and our, our policies are met, so there's never an ending list of competencies that we ensure that we're, we're, we're right up to speed, and, you know, number one, like anything, if you're not hearing anything majorly at the pool, it's because we do have great trained, trained staff, and they're doing quite well. Anna, in her relentless pursuit to get us fit and happy, went to the North Pole, and now I think we're almost back to the South Pole and back to, so to the community, please keep getting your reports in, and we'll continue to work around that. A little different section we've added is, is a process around maintenance, and if there's anything there, Duncan is going to give us more of a brief update on some of the buildings, but as you saw, as Kevin alluded to a bit, with the weather, we've been able to catch up on a lot of things that traditionally we don't, so staff are in the buildings and getting an extra chance to catch up on some of our maintenance. There was one line freeze, hard to believe we had any cold weather enough to, to freeze a line, and, and that worked between the Lakota Center and Andrew over at the, at the Encana, saved us some, some stuff around that, so no insurance claim to that one. The Recreation Department, very busy in the winter with their programs, and I said this before, it always ceases to amaze me how many people play volleyball, and both the number of co-ed teams and male and female programs that are there. So, we, the one, only negative thing that we looked at, and I think will be critical as we go through, is around recruitment of, of, of new programs, and, and one effort that we did make was introduction to new hockey program, and I think we're readjusting on that and looking at a way through our legacy program with the under-18 national championships coming up, with the collection of, of some equipment and, and getting some, some kids into the sport that may not be able to, A, financially get into, or that growing trend between the haves and have-nots that we look at all the time. So, we'll be doing some reloading around that. One thing, very happy to report, and the rinks are up and running, and I don't think it's been a better time with, with no snow. I, I have to go on record to say that I, I backed into the garbage can up at the school the other day, and my wife will never forgive me for that. So, I was just excited to see that my grandson could go skating again, and forgot to check behind in my rearview mirror to see that the garbage can did move with me. So, we're getting, I was up there the other day, and there are a lot of kids using that, but had a chance last night to talk with our, our speed skating group, and they said, again, because of the weather, a lot of the public are using our oval track as well, which is, is good news, bad news? It's just additional maintenance for the speed skating club, but I've seen a bit of a new partnership there, because, again, lack of snow, it's about as nice as you can do, you know, being outside right now and enjoying a little bit of hockey, so... All three rinks are up and running. And it's that busy time getting ready for our beautification, a number of things that David Siemens is doing regards to that, and the planning around that, it's very critical at this time. And starting to remind you that cleanup is right around the corner, and I was chatting with Lloyd this morning, saying Lloyd's probably ahead of the game two months, because with not a lot of snow downtown, usually he catches up quite quick, but we've been able to get into areas this year of additional cleanup that we've never had before, and that's the first reminder that the community cleanup group will be meeting in Wednesday, February 22nd, and I think Council Shelley's involved with that group, so we look forward to that. And last significant note is that we are just about there for the 500,000th visitor at the pool, and certainly, there'll be information to council as we get ready to celebrate that or indicate who that individual is. So, half a million people, that's, that's pretty impressive. From strap planning process update, all our strap planning is currently being worked on, but I think the, the one I'd like to just very briefly talk about was council's attendance with Brian Johnston, and the fees and services charges, and then we met with staff the next day. I'm quite excited about that process and how we'll be bringing reports forward. And I've also briefly talked to the number of user groups that are looking forward to some of that input as we go forward. One of the biggest challenges we have is, is that community knowledge, and, and, you know, anything that we have that we share, the retention here is very good, so we're looking forward to bringing those reports forward in the next couple of months. But staff was quite excited about that ability to establish that policy, get that policy back to council. And for the record, I was the last individual from the staff that saw Dustin Bodnerikoff at the airport, and getting lots of emails from Dustin that he's, things are going very well in Australia, and April had a great send-off for him, and we're very happy to see Dustin doing quite well over in Australia, we do miss him, though, because he's just, he was a great addition to the community. Any questions?
The only, I'm glad you mentioned it, but just a reminder to the public, so it's a great opportunity this month. I'm looking at our stats for the Kembaic Aquatic Center, and if we're at 492-plus, and we average anywhere between 8,000 to 10,000 people a month, my guess is somewhere around the latter week year of February, we're going to hit that half-million mark.
That's correct.
So, if you don't enjoy the pool, you'd never know if the bells go off, and you'll be the one. Be nice to have your, a little bit of a milestone for your name as well, if you, a half-millionth person through the doors, so... But just, you know, and I appreciate those stats, because it's, it's great to show the community just how utilized that is, and I know when I travel out of town for hockey games with my son, I hear some of the other communities that, they say they take a Saturday or Sunday afternoon just to drive to Dawson Creek to use our pool. Even if they have pools, they use it as a, a day away, so, you know, those things wouldn't happen if we didn't have the, the structures that we have here in our community to invite people in, so... And great staff as well down there, obviously.
Okay. Anything from council?
I just have to throw my two cents worth in, I guess. Thanks very much then.
Okay, thank you.
On that, before we recess, I'm going to move back to media question period and thank Matthew for being a good sport. Any questions from media this time? No, not on the record, okay. Well, thanks very much, so then on that then, to council, sixteen-one is a motion to recess to the close. It's Council McFadden, second by Councilor Wilbur. All those in favor, opposed, and scaring, and it'll take five minutes then before the close, thank you.